Reconvene our meeting to open session. The Board has been in executive session since six o'clock to discuss tenure recommendations and contract negotiations. Could I all rise for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If we could have introductions.
Dave Hurst.
Chris Meyer.
Jody Monroe.
Holly Dellenbaugh.
Meredith Mariotti.
Will O'Beir.
Jonathan Fishbein.
And Judy Keough.
And Wendy Sampson and Christine Beck are not able to be with us tonight. They had personal matters. And do we have any PIG students with us tonight? Welcome. Your obligation is to stay until nine o'clock or until the meeting is over, whichever comes first. And there are sign-out sheets up here. You guys can come up and sign out. And if you need a signature on a form, just see any Board member. First up is approval of the minutes. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the minutes from the December 18th, 2019, regular Board meeting. So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? That carries. Do we have anyone here from the Student Senate?
So, in Student Senate, for the Backpack Program, we have a lot of extra food from the holiday food drive, so we don't really have to go shopping anytime soon. We recently got a donation of a refrigerator from the Bethlehem Police Department, so we're looking into options to, for food to put in the refrigerator. For Snowball, we picked a date, Saturday, February 8th, I believe, and we're going to be doing a Spirit Week before that, so we're looking into, like, Spirit Days that week. We, voice crack, sorry about that. Geez, I'm a senior, I shouldn't be having a voice. We met with Mr. DeMell regarding the courtyard, and he said when the construction is finished, we can go ahead with that. So we're looking into meeting with, like, Lowe's and other, like, hardware stores to see if they'll be willing to donate picnic tables and things of that sort. So that's basically what we've been doing recently.
Great, thank you. And thank you to the Bethlehem Police Department for their donation.
Thank you very much.
Do we have anyone here from the middle school tonight?
Good evening. My name is Arthur Huang. I'm eighth grade Hudson, and I'm from the middle school. BCMS Student Council will celebrate the Super Bowl with our annual Soup Erble, where we encourage students to bring in cans of soup to help our Backpack Program at the high school. Character update: Michelle Obama is our most recent honoree for the month of December. Her quote is, "No matter who you are, no matter where you come from, you are beautiful." After her portrait and quote are framed, she will be displayed in our main hallway with our other monthly nominees. BCMS production of Frozen: The Musical begins next week on Thursday, January 16th. And we are looking forward to another great show. January is also another one of our busiest times of the year for our fellow eighth graders as we begin our scheduling process. Next week on Tuesday, January 14th, we have an eighth grade parent transition night right here at the high school. That begins at seven o'clock PM. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next is our superintendent's report.
Sure. So I have several construction updates. So the high school LMC, we are finishing up construction, and furniture and equipment installation should begin January 15th. O&amp;M has already been coordinating meetings with the librarians about logistics and district efforts. We anticipate opening the doors February 3rd, but as we do so, D-2122 will remain open, which is the temporary library. In the high school cafeteria, we're continuing, you can see, work on B.C. Blend and the Eagle Snacks area. We're anticipating construction will be done beginning of February. In the auditorium, insulation and sheet rocking is progressing. They're also constructing the ceiling system and the acoustical rocks, which is part of the design. And looking at, the construction manager's currently looking at the schedule to see about if we're on track for the completion date, which we had anticipated sometime in April or May. The high school bathroom, we have been doing work on those, taking different bathrooms at certain times. So the D-Wing bathrooms have been completed. In the A-Wing demolition is finished. Abatement was done over the winter break, and work is anticipated to be completed the end of January. Once that's done, the B-Wing bathroom renovations will start. In transportation, they're currently working on the employee training room. In mid-December, there was a temporary employee area created, and the area was cleared out for construction to begin. Demolition is pretty much completed, and that work is anticipated to be completed by early February. And the middle school, a new freezer was installed over the window, the winter break, and they're continuing to do a lot of the window work from the new window installation. And another major area of renovation that we'll be getting soon is at Elsmere, they're going to be renovating the public bathroom, storage, and custodial areas. So that's the most recent update around the district. Also, we did receive our Capital District Region Planning Commission's report. I think everyone should have received a copy of that. I'll include that as part of my State of the Schools presentation in February. The enrollment projections are in line with what they projected for the last few years with the district continuing to see some slight declines in their past few years of reports. Their projections have been right on target. They've been generally within one or two students K-12, so we're happy with their work. And I also want to turn it over to Judy about some tax phone calls we've received the last couple of days.
Yeah, I just wanted to make you aware that we had received two phone calls where we had reports that people had been called by somebody who was purporting to be from the Bethlehem Central School District advising them that their tax payments had not been received, and they were asked to get a cashier's check and remit payment, which the district does not call people to tell them their taxes are delinquent. So it appears that it could be a scam, and the people who called did what one would hope somebody would do, which is to call to confirm that their taxes were in fact paid. So hopefully it was just an isolated incident, but we wanted to make you aware of that.
And that's my report.
Thank you. Any questions? For the Board report, I just wanted to say I went to the, attended the high school concert earlier this week, and again, they did a fabulous job, even in the gym, where I know the acoustics are not optimal, but they, I'm always amazed by the musical talent. Anybody else?
Last week, I attended the BOU's Life After B.C. program. It was really well-done again. This year, they had students who were not only freshmen coming back, but also some sophomores and seniors, so it gave a much larger experience for our students to have an idea as to some of the things they should avoid. It was interesting, the seniors were saying, you know, "This is what you should look for in freshman year, this is what you should avoid," and some of the freshmen were obviously picking up on those hints about, you know, "Okay, gee, I think I'll do that when I go back." But it was really good to have a larger experienced group. And the other thing was that there were two individuals who spoke really well. It was interesting, I often listen and start counting ums at some point, and these two students never said um, and, but, er, any of those guttural's that often, like I just did, that inter, that intersect speech. And it was really nice to see that we had students that had that ability. And I just wanted to mention that because it was really something I had not seen or heard before, so it was really a lovely evening.
Myself and my two sons are becoming big Bethlehem Eagles basketball fans, so if you get a chance, please come out and support our teams. Anybody that knows my six-year-old, he's a little bit of energy, but somehow that basketball game has his total focus for an hour and a half. It's incredible. But yeah, please come out and support our teams. I know we have home games coming up here Friday, I believe. And then tomorrow in Hammergrau will be another caper, so bring your blanket and enjoy some reading.
Great. Thank you.
Holly, I had one other thing.
Sure.
It's, Jody, tomorrow night is the Lab School Open House?
Tomorrow night.
Tomorrow night, at what, when?
Seven o'clock, I think. I just saw the communication, I think it's seven o'clock it starts.
Okay, and this is for parents and students if they're interested in finding out more about Lab School?
Correct.
Okay.
Next up is our presentation. We have a presentation tonight on technology by Ray Nardelli.
Six thirty, sorry.
Thank you.
So my name is Ray Nardelli, Director of Technology here at Bethlehem Central. And I am joined this evening by four, or three of my colleagues. Now, they're going to take part in this presentation. We have Shannon Lundgren, who is a Spanish teacher and current two-year instructional technologist. We have Navar Johnson, who's Senior Network Systems Tech. Special thanks to Navar because he is battling illness, and he braved it and came in tonight, so I'm really thankful. And then back in, a couple of rows back, we have Senior Network and Systems Tech Gary Halbadel. So each of those will come up and take a little bit part of this presentation. So, not the most interesting topic, I know, but barely a week or two goes by where we don't hear about a breach, either in the news, the newspaper, on the Internet, major corporations, unfortunately, a little bit more recently, school districts that are subject to different attacks. Ransomware is kind of like, that's the one we hear about most, you know, where cripples hospitals for weeks, if not months, even towns have been dealing with major breaches. So we hear about that part of this story, but rarely do we hear about the backend, the things that teams like ours have to do to try to keep one step ahead of the bad actors and really create an environment that's safe and keeps all of our students, staff, and teachers' information and data protected. So we're going to start by talking about what we do now, and then we're going to move into some New York State regulations that we are going to be, we're going to have to comply with. And then we're going to finish with a little bit of a self-assessment that we had done at the end of 2019. So I'm going to start by handing it over to Shannon Lundgren, who will talk about some of the things we've been doing from an instructional technology perspective.
Hi, thank you so much for having me. So my role is interesting because I really do work with the teachers and with the students, so I am frontlines with our teacher and the education portion of this. So currently in my role, I'm spending time looking at the over sixty pieces of instructional software that we have in district and are currently paying for, and I'm looking specifically at what kind of personally identifiable information is in each one and that they're collecting. So that's one of the bigger pieces of my role. That's the wrong button. So again, PII is Personally Identifiable Information, so things like name, email address, grade, house, all of those pieces of information are information that we as a district have, so we have to know what we're sharing with each software vendor that we have. We're also reviewing, Ray and I meet almost weekly to talk about the existing contracts that we have, and we're working on creating new ones. Ray is going to talk to you a little bit about ED Law 2D in a moment, which is the New York State regulation, and so we have been digging into that. And we've also been attending a lot of workshops through BOSI's to learn about ED Law 2D and what exactly we need to look for. So we're actually digging into our contracts. We also have drafted a new addendum to go with our work, so each software company is going to need to sign the addendum stating that they are compliant with New York State ED Law. And we do also work with NAREC. NAREC has a clearinghouse for a lot of the different softwares that we are already running, and they've done a lot of the legwork for us. So we're going back in and we're looking at what they have, vetting it through them, and then verifying that yes, indeed, that's what they're still collecting because their privacy policies do update fairly frequently. So we're looking at all of those as well. And we currently, this year, it's been exciting. In the past, we've never really had an opportunity for teachers to get new software without going through a lot of different ways, and now we have a much more streamlined process, so teachers can apply for new software through the Instructional Technology Department, and we do the vetting to check and make sure that it is compliant, what personal identifiable information or PII we're using. So they're able to send it through us. We have a fairly quick turnaround time as well, so it's been exciting to get new software for our teachers and our students. And in the spring, we'll be looking at training the teachers in ED Law 2D and helping them to understand what their responsibilities and our responsibilities as a district are to help protect our students and make sure they're safe. And I'm going to pass this over, I believe, to Navar, so there you go.
So some of the other things we've been doing. We have a secondary Internet connection that we purchased last year. We installed it in the high school here, and we did that to guarantee business continuity. What it does is, it basically means that if Internet connection goes down, one of the Internet connections go down, it automatically fails over to the secondary Internet connection so we can continue throughout our day. We do also have plans on moving that connection to the middle school so we can further increase that redundancy. So if it goes down here at the high school and the entire high school goes down, we still have Internet connection out through the middle school. IT password management to ensure unique and complex passwords. Everybody says that they have a whole lot of passwords to remember. I can almost guarantee you that us in IT have way more passwords, probably at least double, for all of the systems and the service accounts that we have to manage. So instead of having to remember each and every single one of those passwords, we use a password manager that will create long strings of random passwords. That makes it way more secure for us, and then we don't have to remember as many. So we limit access to critical systems with role-based permissions. Like most IT departments, we subscribe to what's called least privilege. What that means is if you don't need access to something, we don't give you access to it. It just helps make sure that people are not having administrator rights to a system or service that they don't need access to. Monitor transmission of sensitive data within Gmail, Google Docs, like social security numbers, credit card numbers, and bank account numbers. This is all part of data loss prevention to make sure that we're not losing any sensitive data, any PII, like Shannon was mentioning earlier. So we have a system that we use that notifies us if any of this information is inside of a Google Doc or a Google Sheet or an email. That way, we can actually go in, we can look at the document, we can look at what information is being shared, and we can decide what we want to do with that, whether we want to stop it, let it go through, whatever we need to. We encrypt the data on all district computers, so storage drives can't be pulled and the data harvested. What that means is that every single computer that's in this district other than lab computers is encrypted. So if I were to lose my computer tomorrow and somebody were to take that computer, take the hard drive out of it, they wouldn't be able to get any information off my computer because it's encrypted. It needs a special key that we have in the tech department, so we make sure that every single one of those computers is encrypted. And select business office personnel use computers that are wiped clean daily. It's pretty self-explanatory, but we do have some business office personnel that are using banking computers, and in order to make those more secure, we make sure that that computer gets wiped after every single time that they use that computer. So no passwords, no information that is put out on the Internet, nothing stays on that computer. It's wiped every single time they use it. I'll turn this over to Gary.
Ray said, "My name's Gary Halbadel, I'm the network administrator," which means that I work on the stuff that you don't see. What you see are computers and displays, things like that, you might deal with a printer. I work on what's called the back office, so it's the switches, routers, servers, all that kind of stuff. The front line of our defense for our critical infrastructure are our firewall's. Dual firewall's, what that means is we have two firewall's, they're both powered on, but only one is active, and the purpose is that if one fails, the other one automatically switches over. These firewall's are called next-gen firewall's, which means basically it's the latest and greatest technology. Previously, what we had was very easy to, for the hackers to overcome, to get around things. So these firewall's are, they're still good technology, but we need more power. Just Internet access is increasing all the time. Some of the features that we want to use to kind of dig deeper require more horsepower, so we're going to be looking at upgrading these. The web filter, ostensibly, you're probably aware that it's, the purpose is to protect the student population from objectionable content, but it also keeps users from accessing malicious sites or malware downloadable sites. We have two web filter. One is Chromebook-specific, and so every student that has a Chromebook will be filtered by that, and it's education-oriented, specially designed to deal with educational websites and allow things like that. The other, everything else has a web filter on the firewall. One of the most important things in dealing, protecting against ransomware is having good backup, so we have a backup system that's off-site in a secure location, so everything that's backed up is automatically off-site. Best practice is to take your backup media off-site, but we've solved that automatically by just having the system off-site, so it's away from not in the same building that the data resides in. The other thing is the backup system is not directly attached, so one problem with ransomware, if you have, if you back up to a system that's attached all the time and the ransomware can access that, it just encrypts all of your backups. So what this does, it's only on-demand. It has agents on every device, and when it wants to back up, it contacts and connects and does the backup. Two years ago, we've implemented security training for all of the employees, and I give a live presentation at the beginning of the year, once to, in transportation and once for the rest of the population. And we also deliver online training for, mostly for instructional staff. The live training for people that may not have a district-assigned computer, and it's not that convenient for them to take the training online. We scan the network for vulnerabilities. What this means is we have a software package and server system that scans all of our critical infrastructure, switches and servers, looks for every, every piece of software, every configuration that might be a vulnerability, and reports on it and prioritizes it so that we can go and fix that vulnerability. Critical data, HR and financial have their own password-protected, isolated systems for security. In addition to the training, as part of the training is that we actually do send out simulated phishing emails on a weekly basis, and the purpose, purpose is not to catch people, to trick people, or embarrass anybody, but it's a training purpose. So if somebody does click on a test phishing email, it just lets them know, hey, this was a test, and here's what you should be looking for. So the purpose of that is educational. This is a system that we have for that. This is an example, we can get many reports. The bluish-purplish lineup at the top is the industry, educational industry average for fish-prone percentage. So the fish-prone percentage is the percentage of the population that has fallen for a phishing, simulated phishing email. We are, we've always been below the industry average, so that's pretty good, and we've gotten a lot better. We're down in the single percentile, so the, at the beginning, you can see it's lower and gets higher. The reason it's slow in the beginning is because that was the summer when we started it and people just weren't here. But that's been very successful, and our people are very good. They have a means of, if they suspect a phishing email or reporting that, and I get a notification and people report, they kind of over-report. They report a lot of stuff that's legitimate, but I'd rather that than the other way around, so I commend everybody for that. And this is the kind of information that we can get, how many clicks, 115 people reported it on that particular time period and so on. So it's been a good, worthwhile product, combined training and phishing testing.
Yeah, so you may hear, I mean, the most important or the most possible way that we will lose data is by someone clicking on something, not someone penetrating our network, but by someone clicking on something that they shouldn't. So that, the whole, you know, simulated phishing is, you know, it's really, I think it's been a great thing to bring on, onboard and just, you know, people are great about it. So now we're going to transition into the New York State law. So Section 2D, it's called ED Law 2D is the way that everyone talks about it, and it was adopted in 2014, and it's all about protecting personal information. So the state really, you know, wrote the law to indicate how school districts are supposed to protect data. Well, in, well, let's see. So as Shannon alluded to, you know, the data that we're trying to protect against are all the things that you would imagine, name, birthdate, address, social security number and so forth. And we collect all this, right? As a part of our student information system, we have an incredible amount of data on every student, on every teacher. In our financial system, in our HR system, we have social security numbers, we have, you know, all kinds you know, all kinds of information that we need to be very, you know, protective of. So ED Law 2D is really about protecting this information. Part 121 is what's currently being discussed. So this has been, this is an addition, and I'll talk about the addition in a second here, as to what it means to Bethlehem. But here's the timeline. This was supposed to be law by now, but it's been going through some different revisions, and this is the most recent timeline. And currently, they're expected to adopt it in this month of January, and if it is adopted, then our timeline will be, the first thing we're going to have to do is really, by July 1st, we're going to have to get a policy in place. I'll talk about that right now. So here's just an overview of some of the things that this means to us. We, and this, Shannon alluded to this, we need to do training with our teachers and other people to make sure that people realize how important it is to not share information that we don't need to share. Oftentimes, teachers want to sign up for a particular piece of software to use, and in order to utilize it and effectively and connect, you know, maybe collect assessment data or whatever it is they're trying to do in their class, they're sharing information about, about the students with this company. So we just have to make sure that we are minimizing what we share, and then, as Shannon mentioned, the contracts, this is a big, heavy lift for us. We're going to have to deal with all 60-plus vendors, and there's more than that even. I feel like every week, there's another one that comes, comes by that I need to, you know, look into, and, and we're going to be looking to work with our, with the law firm to help us out here until we get rolling. Whoops. All right, the Parents' Bill of Rights, we actually have this posted on our website already. It's, it really just assures parents that we're not going to sell their students or their child's data. It shows them that they can have access to the student data at any point, they can come through us, they could find out what data we're actually, you know, we have on their, on their child. There's a process to lodge a complaint. So this document exists, but it's going to be enhanced with this Section 121, where we're going to have to post every single software vendor that we're using, the data that we're sharing with those software vendors, and links to their contracts, and links to their privacy policy. So that's all going to be an additional part of the Parents' Bill of Rights that we're going to have to post on our website. We have to comply with the New York National Institute of Standards and Technology, it's called the NIST cybersecurity framework, and that's all about just guidelines to prevent and detect and respond to cyber attacks. So this is, NIST is actually an arm of the Department of Commerce, and they have this whole infrastructure in place that helps guide organizations to better security. Data protection officer, we have to, we have to adopt, we have to elect one. I choose Dave Hurst. No, I think it's going to be me. But officially, we're going to have to name our data protection officer as a part of the 121 guidelines. Data security and privacy policy, this is the first thing we're going to have to publicly post, and I think, again, if this goes through in January, we'll have to have this in place by July 1. So you'll be seeing that, I'm sure, this spring as we get it ready to, to adopt. We have to provide training to all employees that handle sensitive data. So this is an important one, because I think, again, not just our teachers, but our business officials, our people in HR, you know, different, you know, everything from, you know, dealing with any kind of, any kind of sensitive data in systems or on paper. We need to make sure that people know how to handle this information. Just more about the data security policies of third-party contractors or our vendors, this is kind of, is a special bullet just for that again. And then, we already have a breach notification policy, Policy 8635, so it's out there already. We may need to update that. So that's something that we're going to have to look into as a part of the requirements here. Again, this is just the timeline, July 1, 2020 is probably what we're looking at to actually make something happen. Okay, so now, our cybersecurity report card is what I'm calling it. So we know what we're doing, we know we could do better. As an IT department, we think about this all the time, how to protect, you know, luckily I sleep pretty well at night, but if I was going to, you know, stay awake, it would be because of, you know, these potential threats. So we need to do everything we possibly can to make sure that we're following industry standards, to make sure that we're protected. So we hired this company, this local company, Gray Castle Security. They do a lot of work in education, higher education, they have all kinds of services when it comes to security. So we hired them to do a risk assessment in the fall, and they came onboard or came on campus for two days, and using that NIST framework, they asked us, I don't know, 5,000 questions over the course of two days. They talked to the IT department, they talked to, they talked to Judy and her team in the business office, they talked to Amy in the HR department, some of our district administrators were involved, O and M was involved. So they're just asking lots and lots of questions about not just technologies, but process and people. So the goals of the assessment were really to define our risks and weaknesses, how we do deviate from the industry standards, and again, not just technology, but what people are doing, what processes we have in place, and then giving us an idea of how we can remediate the areas of weakness, and then through presentations like this, to elevate the awareness of what, what we're doing to try to secure our situation. This is the NIST, I'm not going to go through this, but this, just to show you, there's a very, you know, it's a very comprehensive, you know, framework to really help all kinds of organizations, not just educational, but all kinds of organizations, figure out the best way to deal with cybersecurity. Okay, so here are some of the findings, very high-level stuff. I'm going to just, I'm going to, we're going to pass off a little bit here, I'll do a few, Gary's going to do a few, and Navar. So I've already talked a lot about this, but this is one of the things that they pointed out, is our, our vendor management and our, they started asking about our contracts. And frankly, I mean, Bethlehem's not alone. We, you know, we don't have a lot of, we haven't kept, we haven't done a good job of keeping track of the contracts of all these different companies that we've been dealing with. This is just something that has kind of grown over the years, and it's now time to kind of get our arms around it. So vendor management basically means contract management. I'm going to hand the next two slides over to Gary, you want to talk about, so we need to enhance the, how we audit the network and system activity.
One way that we audit is all of the devices create logs, log files, so it's everything that happens on the device, it generates an information item. And the idea is that somebody is going to look through that stuff on a periodic basis, and we do, but it's, it's really limited what a human being can do. What you're looking for are things like repeated failed logins and a lot of different attempts at logging in, that would be somebody trying to hack the system. So one thing that we're looking at are EDR, which is endpoint detection and response. An endpoint is any device on the network, your computer primarily is an endpoint. So you may be familiar with antivirus products, that was typically what did the endpoint protection. Now, they're what they call signature-based, and hackers have figured a way around that, they can randomly change signatures. It doesn't work very well, bottom line, it's considered to be about 20% effective right now. So what everybody's transitioning to is this, what's called EDR, just, you know, more industry jargon, but, and it's kind of hard to define because the vendors are trying to do different things, but what they're trying to do is look at the behavior. So if some program is trying to do something that fits the profile of ransomware or some kind of a threat actor, that's what they're trying to identify. So it's, it's really a new field, it's, it's wide open, and we're looking at a lot of different things, and, but they're, they're very effective, a lot of effective products out there, and that's, that's what we're.
So Gary's done a nice job in the, he spent most of the summer and the fall looking at lots of different solutions to help us with this, and you'll see, when I do my budget presentation in about a month, that there are going to be some additional security asks, really, as a part of, as a part of the IT budget, this is going to be one of them. So our next area is really formalizing our vulnerability scanning process. As Gary mentioned, we do vulnerability scanning. Do you want to say anything more about this, or?
Well, just that, I mean, we have, we have a scanner, it's manually right, manual right now, and it's like a person-intensive work. We, it's great to find the vulnerabilities, the real work is in fixing them. So we're trying to transition me to do more of the security administrative work, and we have, some of the other people on our team are anxious to get involved in a higher-level system work, so they'll be helping with that. But we're also, again, we want to look at software that can help us with this process.
Yeah, so there, as Gary alluded, we have some, we have some staff who, I think, have a little bit of time and interest to, to help Gary out in this way. So as Gary mentioned, I mean, a vulnerability might be, a system needs to be updated, I mean, you, I mean, everybody, they don't often do this, but they should, they should keep their phones up to date, they should keep their computers up to date, because what happens is if there's a security hole in anyone's system, hackers know it, and they'll, they'll look for those, those vulnerabilities. There's been some major vulnerabilities that have been attacked and exploited just because of the lack of security updates being applied. So that's kind of what we're talking about here. Our incident response plan, we have one, like I said, it's, it's on our website, but we need to live it a little bit more and test it, and make sure that if an incident really does happen, that we're going to be ready to roll. There's, there's, you were talking about, go ahead.
Yeah, just really pretty exciting, and it's something good that the government is doing, Homeland Security, the Center for Internet Security, and what's called NSISAC, Multi-State Information Something Analysis Center. These are all government agencies, they provide great free services to public entities like us, like the school, training, incident response. So if we have an incident, they will, for free, will come in and help us out with that. And that's what, what they do all, all the time, not, not what we do. So it's great to have that kind of help.
So we, yeah, we're going to have to engage with that and try to find out more information so that we can take advantage of it, or hopefully never take advantage of it. Establishing information security governance structure is another thing that, that Gray Castle said we need to do, and it's absolutely true. I mean, really, this is just a set of objectives and priorities on how to handle risk, and we don't have a lot of written documentation in this area, and we need to. So as, as the IT director, I know this is something we need to do. We need to have policies in place, we're going to be forced to have the policy in place by the state by, by July, but then there's other parts and other policies that need to be a part of our, our really, really just, you know, how we prioritize security assessments. So, so this is something that, this is more of a policy piece, not, not technology at all. And lastly, I'll just ask Navar to talk about this, this is another finding.
Right, so almost everybody nowadays has a, a phone with them. So expanding mobile device management to include staff personal devices, that's, that's what it is. It's the mobile devices that everybody has with them. We want to be able to secure them, specifically the data that they have on their phones. So everybody has that, that phone, which is a miniature computer, and on their phone, they're taking emails, they're looking at Google Docs, they're looking at Google Sheets, and all of that has data. PII data, like we've been talking about, it's, it's just all data, and we need to be able to secure that. So with a mobile device management system, we are able to create a profile on their personal phone, and we are able to manage that profile. So I'm not able to erase the entire phone, but I can erase the data that's stored in that profile. So what we do is, we push the profile to everybody's personal phones, and we install Gmail, we install Google Docs, we install all of those pieces of, those apps that our teachers and our staff are using, we put it on that profile so we can manage that information. So if somebody loses their phone, or the phone gets stolen, we don't have to worry about the data that's stored on their phone, because it's either secured behind that profile, or if we need to, we can wipe the profile completely.
Yeah, so not, I mean, we, we have not identified an exact way that we're going to do this, we're looking at different options, but what I don't want to, what I want to make sure that we're not confusing people is, this would be optional, if, if staff wanted to put, you know, email on their personal device, then they would have to accept the ability to, to create this profile, and then the only thing we would have access to is that profile. I mean, the rest of their phone, we have no access to anything on that phone except for that profile, and it's really just to protect Bethlehem information that's on personal devices. So that's what I have for you tonight. Questions?
I have a question, so I'll start. And I don't know if this is best for Shannon, you mentioned that we're doing software vetting to look at what information is being collected, and I'm just wondering whether, does that include apps that are being used by our teachers?
Yes, it does. It includes all applications, extensions, add-ons, all of those, those items we're looking at. As a matter of fact, today I just declined a teacher from using something because their privacy policy was a little too sketchy for my liking, so.
Okay.
Like, why can't I use this? I'm like, eh, it's dodgy.
And do you feel like you have a good handle on what apps are currently being used in all the, at all the building levels?
I'll let Ray answer that one.
Okay.
We're, we're working together on that one.
Yeah, so we have just purchased a, a software inventory program that, where basically we install an agent on all devices, and then it reports back as to the services that it's connecting to. So we, I mean, we have, as Shannon mentioned, we have a list of 60-plus pieces of software that we pay for, we know about, but there are definitely applications that a teacher might decide they're going to buy on their own, and they don't tell us, or something that doesn't cost anything, that they might just install.
I'm thinking of things that are free.
And so, but yeah, so this, the idea behind this software inventory tool is that it can basically crawl, you know, through all the devices and, and tell us what's being used. So then the things that we don't know are, then we can go out there and figure out which computer it's installed on and do some investigation. Also, you know, we talked about training that we're going to do, I'm going to, Shannon and I will go out to all the different faculty meetings sometime in the spring to talk about ED Law 2D, talk about student data, talk about the process that we have in place to actually, you know, request software and just have teachers know that they can't just install software and share student information without going through us first.
And so ultimately, there'll be a list available on, on our website of what apps and what software is approved?
That's absolutely right.
So if, for example, a parent realizes that something is being used that's not on that list, then they would
Oh, yeah, sure.
Contact you?
Absolutely. Yeah, that's, that's another good way. Yep.
Okay.
So Ray, is it, am I hearing correctly that the teachers have the ability to add programs to their school devices without any clearance through you?
No, it's actually web services that they can usually install or get access to. They have to be an administrator of their computer to install software, and we don't allow teachers to be, or we don't allow most staff to be administrators of their computer. So if they wanted to install something, what we do often, we have different tools. On the Mac, it's called Software Self-Service, and on the Windows machine, it's called Software Center. So anything that we vet, that teachers want
So anything that we vet, that teachers want to install on their computers, they can go to those sites and download for their computers. But if a teacher finds, you know, app XYZ, and they try to install it, they'll be blocked because they're not an admin of their computer. They can request, and we can look into it, and then if it's something that we want to purchase for them. What they can do on their own is they can go to a website and sign up for some software service through the web, and that we can't always control. So by, but by having that inventory tool kind of crawling around and figuring out what those different services are, hopefully we'll have a better idea of the things that teachers aren't telling us about.
Okay, well, obviously, I'm not a millennial, so I, I'm missing something here. What is it exactly that they can grab from the internet, or from the web, and install on their computer, or is it just use on their computer? It's not installed as use?
It's just web-based, I think what you're saying is it's just web-based, so it doesn't require you to install it, you can just use it on the web.
You could sign up for it. Think about, just in Amazon, let's say, let's say if you shop on Amazon, you're not installing anything on your computer, you're going to a website, you're putting in, you're creating an account, and now you have access to this information. Well, some of these educational sites, I don't know if you can think of any, Shannon, but Quizlet is what Shannon says, you sign up for it, and then you give your kids a code, so there's a class code, and then they're a part of this class, and then they're basically, you know, they're taking online quizzes through this web interface, and we may not know anything about that.
Okay, so what I'm, what I'm getting at then is, if right now, we can block students from going to certain websites, when you find these programs that are grabbing too much PII for your comfort level, or they have a privacy policy that isn't appropriate, do you block those?
We absolutely can. I'm sure there are some that we have, well, Gary deals with this on a daily basis where teachers are asking for him to unblock things, or block things, depending on what their needs are. But, you know, in the case of specific, that's a, once we have the software inventory tool in place, and we can kind of go out there and see what people are using, until we've had a chance to vet them, we could absolutely block by URL. So yes, the answer to what you're saying is yes.
Well, okay, you can, are you, or will you, what's the plan to make sure that we don't have a breach because we have discovered something we're not comfortable with, but we haven't blocked it yet? I mean, is there a way in which you're looking at proceeding with this?
Well, yeah, the first part of that, the plan is to identify the, well, I'll say the web services that are being used that we don't know about. That actually, I don't know, it's tied up in a, in a BOSI's cross-contract thing right now, because I ordered it back in December, and it's just, it's being hung up for some reason. But once that comes through, then we'll be able to actually do our inventory and determine those sites that we don't know about, and we'll do some investigation, and then we can, you know, really, at the drop of a hat, we can block anything that we know about.
Thank you.
Some of that also has to do with the education piece that Ray was referring to, that if teachers know that you can't just put student information on a web service, that hopefully that will help as well to vet it appropriately.
And I think teachers want, I mean, teachers want to do the right thing. So I think a lot of this is just education and making them aware of the dangers that's out there. So I don't, I'm not anticipating any pushback or any problems, I just think most of it is just an education.
I found traditionally with apps or websites, and it's a child using it, usually they ask for parental approval. So how do we deal with that? Obviously, we're not asking parents every time a child uses a new app. So how?
Right, so my understanding, there's a, something called COPPA, I think it's, or yes, it's COPPA or CAPA, and that's all about, a software vendor cannot, cannot work with a child that's 13 years, that's under 13 years old, without getting parental consent. And through the CAPA rule, a school district can act on the behalf of a parent and grant access for that, for that piece of software. But I think the part of New York State, the Section 121 ruling is knowing that that is out there, and requiring us to, all districts, to post every piece of software that we're using. So you will be able to say, okay, what is my, you know, I don't know, third grader using? You can look at the list, and then, you know, it's, it is, yeah, it's about transparency, really, but the fact that the school district can act on behalf of the, of the parent and give permission to share that data.
Great, thanks. Chris?
Yeah, first, sorry, Shannon, you're popular. You mentioned about how teachers can request new software, which I love. If you find a piece of software that is successful, how do you advertise that to the rest of the community? Because a lot of times, we have some very tech-savvy teachers that know everything on a computer, and then the rest of the teaching population is clueless about these.
Yeah, and has no idea that it's there. So currently, we do host a website, it's an Intranet, so it's only internal, teachers can go and view software that is already vetted and that we do pay for. We show them what their options are, so it's there, it's posted on Every Learning in the Lou, so if you've noticed that, so teachers can see that. I also spend time advertising different things. Most recently, I found some different software that worked really well in science and in social studies, so I create a flyer and I give them tech tips on how to use that software in their classroom, and I just pop it in their mailbox. We do faculty meetings at the middle school, very often, five minutes at the middle school will gain me about three weeks' worth of work, because I will demo a software, or I will, even better, I will have one of our teachers or our power users demo it, and then everybody else wants to know about it. We run professional developments at various points during the school year, during the school day, they can always sign up for coaching, and we also have seven, no, I'm sorry, nine tech coaches that work in each building. There are three in the middle school, four in the high school, and one in each elementary school, and they're your tech go-to person. And me personally, I can't walk down the hallway and not get sucked into a classroom, so I'm a walking billboard, apparently.
No, that's great, it's just there's so many wonderful programs out there, and sometimes it doesn't get...
It's really hard, yeah.
Shared, and people are like, this program could probably solve all your problems if you only knew about it.
Exactly.
The other question?
We also, I just want to jump in, because Dave has been organizing the last couple summers Tech Boot Camp, and it's two days in the summer, where it's just full, like, six-hour worth of classes like that, of just lots of different software, teachers teaching teachers about how to use software.
That's great. The other question I had was about vendors, because that's the part, like, that scares me the most. You said you're going to be reviewing all the vendors. What, do we have a plan if we find a vendor that we don't feel comfortable with, because they would, they have our data, and how to, like, do we have a plan, like, how do we, say, give it all back, or do they keep it, or like, how does that even work?
That's a good, that's a really good question. I mean, I think the one thing that I really like about the fact that New York State is doing this is, it's forcing all school districts to kind of comply. So it's, so as an individual school district who might be really super serious about security, you're kind of out there on your own, but now, let's take CSO, for example. CSO is a program that's used in elementary schools, there are so many schools across New York State that's using CSO. So if, if there's something that's not right in the CSO contract, they're going to want to make it right if they're going to continue selling to New York, New York schools. So as far as compliance goes, my guess is that any of these major vendors, and as Shannon was saying, we use this NAREC tool, and part of the cool thing about the tool is it shows other districts that are using the tool, and then also, kind of, like she said, they kind of pre-vet it. But to answer your question specifically of, like, if we find a company that isn't in compliance and won't do what we want, and, you know, has some data, I'm going to, I guess I'll cross that bridge when I get there. I mean, I'll talk to our legal team or something, I'm not really sure how we would deal with that, other than, you know, hopefully, the fact that, you know, we would, we would not renew that contract, and, you know, the, most of these software companies that we deal with are just real legitimate learning, you know, learning companies that want to enhance teaching and learning, at least that's what I find. And we started to send some of our addendums out to some of the vendors just to see what would happen, they sign them just like that. They want to comply, they want to, they want our business, and I just think the more, I think it's going to be a heavy lift at first with all the vendor contracts, but then I think, you know, as all of us in New York are all in the same boat together, the, the software vendors are going to, like, they're going to be answering the same question, you know, time over time over time, so I'm just hoping it just gets easier.
Okay, yeah, thank you, I just, this is my personal opinion, I think that, like, I actually feel a lot safer with the people here in the building that are doing it, I just always worry about...
Of course.
When it starts to get sent out, you know, who's, who's looking at it, and, you know, even if like 99.9% of the people are reputable and wonderful, if it's that point one, it's, that's when it gets to be...
For sure.
Scary.
Sorry, Holly, I just realized I had a follow-up question to the training questions that were going back and forth earlier, and I'm wondering about the student portion of that, and that might not even be a question for you, but how or if we're teaching our students how important it is not to provide certain information in certain ways, and how we tackle that.
Aren't you glad I came tonight? So digital citizenship is something that we incorporate into our classes, it's something that I embed into classes and work with the teachers on. Data privacy isn't, it's just the tip of the iceberg in the world that we live in, it's about being a good digital citizen, being, you know, crediting our sources, which has always been a battle, Chris, I know, it's a social study teacher, you understand. So we work with the children in that way. We also have, at our middle school, of course, we have our computer science program where they do talk about, you know, security and how to stay, stay safe and be safe online. My primary work is with the secondary, but I do know that our librarians work with our elementary students on it as well. I do think it's an area that we can definitely improve on, because I think it's a whole new world. This, this wasn't a thing 20 years ago when I started teaching, and now it's a very real thing. So as with anything in technology, we're always growing with it, so it is something that we are doing.
Yeah, we do have a K5 scope and sequence for digital citizenship and digital skills that the librarians are the ones that mainly tackle that, but it also does bleed into the classroom.
Okay, thanks. Any other questions?
Let me start with the second half of my presentation.
Thank you very much.
See, I could see their faces, you couldn't.
Next on our agenda, Item Six, Action Items. A, Finance Action Items. Oh, I'm sorry about that, I'm jumping ahead. Item Five, Recognition of Visitors on an Agenda Item. If we have any visitors who would like to speak on an agenda item, now would be the time to come up. Seeing no one, moving forward now to Item Six, Action Items. A, Finance Action Items. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the following finance action items, one through three.
So moved.
Second. Any discussion? Just thank the BOU for their donation. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? That carries. B, Professional Personnel Action Items. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the following professional personnel action items, one through 14.
So moved.
Second. Any discussion? And I'll just note, we have a couple of significant retirements with a significant number of years on there, so congratulations to them. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? That carries. C, Support Personnel Action Items. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the following support staff action items, one through three.
So moved.
Second. Any discussion? Just note again, we have a number of years for people who are retiring, so we'll have some shoes to fill. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? That carries. D, Other Action Items. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the following action items, one through two.
So moved.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? That carries. Item Seven, Recognition of Visitors on a Non-Agenda Item. If we have any visitors who would like to speak on a non-agenda item, please come forward Item Eight, Future Meetings and Events. On Monday, January 13th, at 5:30 PM, there's an Audit Committee meeting here at the high school, and also on Monday, January 13th, at 6:30, there is a Facilities Committee meeting also here at the high school. On Wednesday, January 22nd, we have our next board meeting, that is taking place at Elsmere Elementary School, with a start time of 7:00 PM, anticipating an executive session starting at 6:00. Monday, January 27th, at 6 o'clock, we have a Policy Committee meeting here at the high school, and on Wednesday, January 29th, at 5:30, is our Board of Education Midyear Retreat here at the high school. Seeing no need to go back into executive session, can I have a motion to adjourn the meeting?
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Meeting adjourned.